I would like to call to order the May 21st, 2024, meeting of the Colrain Township Zoning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Welcome to those in attendance, township staff and my fellow commissioners. Just a friendly reminder for everyone present tonight to please silence your devices at this time. Mr. Peters, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
Ms. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Westfall, sorry.
That's okay. Close enough.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. McMaulden?
Here.
Commissioners, presented before you tonight, thank you. Are the meeting minutes from our previous meetings? First up are the minutes from our February 20th meeting. Does anyone have any comments or edits? Hearing none, can we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
In a second. Thank you. And Mr. Peters, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMaulden?
Yes. Then we also have meeting minutes from our April 8th meeting. Anyone have any comments or edits on those minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Peters?
Mr. Bachman?
Abstain.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMaulden?
Yes. So next on the agenda, we have our public address. So we do want to welcome members of the public to address the zoning commission with any items on tonight's agenda. If you are here for either of the public hearings, your comments will be heard during the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Are you here for a public hearing? Or outside?
It's for family.
Ms.
Okay, so neither of the public hearings?
No.
Or is it for the public hearing?
Excuse me. She has signed up to speak in relation to case number four.
Okay, so we'll hear from you during the public hearing?
You can speak.
Is there anyone who wants to speak about anything else? Okay, seeing none, and thank you, Mr. Miller. So seeing none, we will move on. We do not have any final development plans this meeting, so that does bring us to the public hearings. We do have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. The first is a hearing for CZC 24-3, a minor amendment to the consent decree, A 000 7121, at 3882 Struble Road. And do we have a presentation?
We do.
Please proceed.
Okay, so public hearing one tonight is for CZC-24-3, a minor amendment to the consent decree at 3882 Struble Road. The inquiry is replacement of an old existing salt bin. We have a 30,000-foot view map here that shows the area of the salt bin within Colrain Township, pretty much central. And then we have more of a zoomed-in map. You see the red pen there that shows the location of the proposed salt bin. And this is just an outline of the parcel, so this shows exactly where it's at. This is an outline of the parcel without satellite imagery. And here we have a topo map. So the proposed action, Lachlan McIntosh and Kyle Lawrence are the applicants, and they're requesting a minor amendment to the consent decree, A 007 7121, to allow for the replacement of an existing salt bin at the site at 3882 Struble Road. While numerous cases have been involved over the years, it has been directed to staff that the consent decree and ZA 1999-06 Rumke and ZA 5-88 Rumke are the cases that are most relevant to the proposed amendment. Additionally, legal staff has advised Colrain Township administration that the consent decree and the amendments thereto are the prevailing regulations which constitute the zoning of the property related to this request. During staff's review of this submitted proposal, the following circumstances prevent staff from having the authority to issue a zoning certificate on the administrative level for the requested action per the requirements of the Colrain Township zoning resolution. Per the consent decree, which was amended in 2005 and 2016, any modifications of existing buildings are required to be approved as an amendment by the Colrain Township Zoning Commission. So that's why we're here tonight. Consent decree item number 29 states, "Existing buildings and structures shall be permitted to remain within the EF District until such time that the area is redeveloped. Any modification of such buildings other than removal shall be constituted as an amendment to the consent decree and shall be reviewed and approved by the Township Zoning Commission." On the screen you see their application, which is also included in the packet, including, as well as the letter of intent. The property report can be viewed, and it shows facts about the property. We have the site plan here on the screen. This is what the salt bin will look like. It will replace the existing salt bin on the site. And then we have schematics of the specific floor plan or layout. And we have elevations of the bin. So this is the front cover of the packet, and it shows several items to be built, and these are all included in your packet. There is a landscape and lighting plan. The applicable zoning documents are the Colrain Township zoning resolution. Most relevant is 9.4 SWD, the solid waste disposal district. Also, as typical, 4.3.4, the review criteria for the zoning commission. 9.4 SWD has five lines on it. A is to define the full limits of the landfill and other solid waste disposal activity to avoid continued expansion of such uses without planning for, and the mitigation of any adverse impacts on the surrounding properties and neighborhoods. B, to define other uses that are compatible with the solid waste disposable facilities. C is to ensure that the location and design of solid waste disposal facilities and landfill uses are compatible with and do not adversely affect other uses in the surrounding neighborhood. E is to protect the overall interest of the public. And C is central processing facility for solid waste transfer and/or for materials and resources recovery and recycling. 9.4.8 is regarding the approved development plan, site plans, and court orders. It states, "Any development plan, site plan, or use of the property that includes the uses or activities permitted within the district or otherwise permitted under any valid court order or prior zoning classification, including the EF zoning classification, that was legally permitted or approved prior to the effective date of the resolution shall continue to be valid, shall not be deemed a nonconforming use, and shall be subject to the zoning regulations or valid court order in place at the time of the development plan, site plan, or the use of the property was approved. Any development or activities that occur in compliance with those approved plans or valid court order shall be deemed to be in compliance with the resolution. If a conflict arises between any existing approved use under any development plan, site plan, or valid court order that conflicts with the requirements of the district and the requirements that were previously in effect, the least restrictive shall apply." 4.3.4 are our typical zoning commission outline. Staff recommendations: Staff recommends for approval of case CZC 24-3, the minor amendment to the consent decree, A 007 7121, at 3882 Struble Road, with the following conditions being none.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Uh-uh.
Okay. At this time, we do need to open our public hearing. Can we have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second?
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMaulden?
Yes. All right. And, let's see. Mr. Huber? You do not wish to speak?
Not my case.
This one's not your case? The next one's your case. I'm just so used to seeing you. Okay. All right, so do we have anyone from Rumke present who wishes to speak? All right, please step forward.
Name is Kyle Lawrence. I'm a site engineer for Rumke in the Cincinnati area. Not a whole lot to add to the staff's presentation. We'll simply be replacing the existing salt bin structure that's there with a structure of similar size in the same location.
Commissioners, any questions? And Mr. Miller, I just want to confirm, starting our public hearing, we do not wish to swear in, correct?
No, I was expecting you to do that, I'm sorry. Or expecting me to do that.
All right, would you mind stepping back up, please?
I'm just watching. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak during the Rumke hearing?
Yep, I think it's just a problem, Kyle. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can state your address for the record.
My address? It is 10795 Hughes Road, Cincinnati, Ohio.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and next? And again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Zach Clark, Cardinal Engineering, Civil Engineer on the project. My address is 839 Denora Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45220. Nothing to add, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm here if any questions arise from a civil engineering perspective.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion to close our public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Peters?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMaulden?
Yes. All right, so at this time, any additional questions, commissioners? Or would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the plans for minor renovation at 3882 Struble Road as presented.
Second?
So we have a motion for approval and a second. Mr. Peters?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMaulden?
Yes. So the motion carries. Thank you. All right, so we have a second public hearing tonight, and that is for zoning case CZC-24-4, a minor amendment to CZC 11-1 at 7284 Eagle Creek Road. And do we have a presentation?
We do.
Thank you.
Public hearing number two tonight, CZC-24-4, a minor amendment to case CZC-11-1 at 7248 Eagle Creek Road. The inquiry is for an off-site parking lot, accessory parking lot that's going to be across the street from the current use. Again, we have our 30,000-foot map view, and as we zoom in, we can see the parcels. The one with the red pen is the parcel in question. We see it outlined here with a satellite aerial imagery and without, and this shows the property owners on it, topo map. The proposed action, Scott Huber and Barry Strobe, applicants, are requesting a minor amendment to case CZC-11-1 to allow for an off-site parking lot at 7248 Eagle Creek Road for the American scaffolding business located across the street at 7161 Eagle Creek Road. In 2011, case CZC-11-1 was approved to allow for a zoning map amendment from R2 to PDB for the American scaffolding business at 7161 Eagle Creek Road. Despite the area's residential zoning, the parcel had been used for light business since the 1980s. The application, which is in your packet, checklist is also in your packet, and so is the transmittal letter. We have a letter of intent from the applicant, which has been included in your packet, along with a legal description and the site plans. The applicable zoning documents are the Colrain Township zoning resolution, specifically section 9.2.2A, uses permitted in floodway area of zone AE, 13.4.7C, off-site parking, and our typical review criteria. 9.2.2A are the uses permitted in the floodway areas of zone AE. The following uses shall be permitted in special flood hazard areas designated as the floodway area of zone AE on the applicable farm maps. Three says off-street parking facilities are related to the principal use of the subject property. Applicable zoning documents, now we move on to 13.4.7C, which talks about off-site parking. A portion of the required parking spaces may be located on a separate lot from the lot on which the principal use is located if the off-site parking complies with the following standards and is authorized in accordance with subsection 13.3.4, modification of required number of spaces. One, off-site parking shall not be used to satisfy the off-street parking standards for residential uses, hospitals, bars, or convenience stores or other convenience-oriented uses. Required parking spaces reserved for persons with disabilities shall not be located in the off-site parking facility either. Number two says, "No off-site parking space shall be located more than 500 feet from the primary interests of the use served, measured along the shortest legal practical walking route." And number three says, "Off-site parking shall not be permitted on a vacant lot in a residential zoning district unless permitted by the Board of Zoning Appeals as part of a conditional use." Four, off-street, off-site parking areas shall adhere to regulations of the same or a more intensive zoning classification than the required for the use served. Number five says, "In the event that the off-street parking area is not under the same ownership as the principal use served, a written off-site parking agreement shall be required." Six, an off-site parking agreement shall be submitted and approved as a form by the Colrain Township attorney, or the prosecuting attorney. This agreement shall include provisions, evidence of deed restrictions, or other recorded covenants that ensure that the spaces will be properly maintained during the life of the development. And finally, we have number seven, I'm sorry, number seven, "The off-site parking agreement approved by the Colrain Township attorney shall be filed with the application for a zoning certificate and shall be recorded as a deed restriction or covenant in a manner as to encumber all properties involved in the off-site parking agreement." Eight, "Final inspection to authorize occupancy shall not be granted until proof of recording of the agreement is provided with the zoning administrator." And finally, number nine, "Off-site parking shall be used and maintained solely for parking as long as the use, as recorded and approved, exists. The off-street side parking agreement may be terminated when the additional site is no longer necessary, there is a change of use, or approved conditions are no longer applicable." And then we have our zoning commission review criteria. And staff recommendations: Staff recommends approval of case CZC 24-4, minor amendment to case CZC 11-1 at 7248 Eagle Creek Road, with the following conditions, none.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? All right, hearing none, at this time, we need to open the public hearing. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Mr. Peters, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMaulden?
Yes. All right, so if there's anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing, please raise your right hand to be sworn in.
Stand, please, hold your, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Huber, did you want to start us off? Welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing this case tonight. My name's Scott Huber, I'm the site civil engineer. My address is Abercrombie and Associates, 8111 Cheviot Road, Suite 200, 45247. The applicant and myself were both in agreement with the staff report that was presented. I just want to highlight some of the points in there, that yes, we're asking for approval for a minor amendment tonight to add 33 parking spaces on the property that we talked about. The applicant is American scaffolding. They currently have a contract on the total property there. You see there, that's about 14 acres. That's zoned residential currently. And what we're proposing to do is cut out about a .7 acre tract and install these 33 parking spaces. We think that there's a need for them, both from the applicant's standpoint, from an operation standpoint, from American scaffolding, but the intent is also to share those spaces with the little goody shop, which, you know, if you know, if you've been down that area during the summertime, it gets kind of congested. So since the peak hours of the goody shop and American scaffolding, they kind of don't coincide, we feel that this is a good opportunity to provide some shared parking so that either employees or patrons of the little goody shop, they have an opportunity to park there, you know, when American scaffolding isn't using it. But the intent is for, during the business days, is for American scaffolding employees that park their cars over there because they're kind of running out of space. So if you can scroll on, I don't know if you can scroll the plan to the south, we're proposing a pedestrian bridge over the creek. Yeah, you can kind of see it right there. Pedestrian bridge over the creek, and then there's a, there's going to be a crosswalk for the American scaffolding employees to cross Eagle Creek Road. Reached out to the county engineer, we've met out there a couple times, and they're generally on board with it. It might not be that exact configuration that's shown on the plan, but they are agreeable to having a crosswalk go across Eagle Creek Road. So the county engineer's been notified, they've been on site, they're generally on board with the project. So that's kind of it, and, you know, kind of simple terms, that concludes my presentation, but I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Mr. Huber steps away, do any commissioners have questions for him?
I just had a quick question. I saw in the staff report that 500 feet between the business that would be served and the additional parking, do you know approximately how far, what's the walking distance from...
We're within that.
You are?
So all the items that staff reported on for off-site parking were able to meet all those requirements. So we're within the 500 feet from the office building of American scaffolding and from the little goody shop.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, also signed in is Spencer Strobe?
Excuse me, if needed, for questions.
If needed, okay. And Pam, are you, oh, okay, go ahead.
My name is Pam Spratt. My address is 7330 Eagle Creek Road. I am a neighbor and actually purchased my property, which is adjacent immediately to the property that is at issue now, the 14 acres, from the same seller. My question is, because we are looking at a 14-acre property, what...
Ma'am, can you address the commission?
I'm sorry. I am curious to know what, if any, plans there are for the remaining acreage. One, and two, how, like where specifically on the acreage the parking lot will be situated? Because as you can see, so the, that sort of curvy line that goes up, that's a gravel driveway that serves my property as well. And so I'm just curious to know what those plans are. The prior owner had allowed me to use, make use of that driveway in the wintertime because it's, what you can't see very well from the map, is that it's exceptionally hilly. It's, yeah, so I have just questions about how they intend to use the remainder of the property and what impact that will have on that existing gravel drive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And ma'am, I know, okay. And if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
It's, good evening, it's Barbara Sicker, S.I.C.K.E.R., 7238 Creekview Drive.
Okay.
I got this letter, and it's saying that it's within 200 feet of my condo. So, you know, I'm against building more stuff and not, because they're saying there's plenty of land, but they're taking it all away. And it's going to be right in my 200 feet of my condo. So I'm against it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, I'm not sure who can address.
That's God here for me, all right.
Yep.
(inaudible).
So the first one, the gravel driveway?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to address the first question about the remaining property.
Sure.
We specifically cut this little parcel out, this .7 acres out, so that we could leave the rest of the property as R1. We didn't want to, you know, cause a commotion and try to rezone the whole thing. We thought that would be a little bit disruptive to the community. So the intent is to leave the remainder of the property, R1, to leave it as a residential zone. The gravel drive that Ms. Spratt is talking about, that's going to remain in place. The American scaffolding owners know about that, and they're willing to leave that in place. There are no future plans for this residential property at this time. So we specifically wanted just to isolate the area of interest for our parking area and leave the rest as it is.
Thank you.
Question for you. Are there any plans to either landscape the parking, or is it going to be lit for the evening?
It's really, as it is right now, if you drive down there, it's really like a gravel, kind of a gravel lot right now. So the intent is to just, you know, put asphalt down and stripe that. You know, there's guard rail that's there, there's already a break in the guard rail to get in and out of that area. The hillside, as you go up on the backside, you can see there, it's, you know, somewhat wooded and prairieed and stuff like that. So the intent was not to add landscaping.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Can you answer, Ms. Sicker?
Sicker.
Yes, again, I think, I think to address her concern is that the remaining piece of the property is going to remain residential, and what you see there is, you know, what she's going to see with this application, so. Scott, if you wouldn't mind, this might help her. If you could go up to the map and point where the lot's going to be, and then we can show you exactly where her house is. I think you can generally see it, it's right in here. Okay. So we might be, you know, going up in here and down here, so it's all, it's all up in this area right now, and... Her house, no, no, go left, one more lot left, right there. I think that, no, right, I think that house right there. Is that yours, Ms. Sicker?
I can't tell.
It is.
Yeah, we looked it up on the map, and that's your house there. This is all Taylor Creek, right? Isn't that Taylor Creek condos, right? So what happened was, you see that little panhandle that's dipping down that touches the road? No, go up. Your property, Scott, keep going up.
Your property.
Right there. That little panhandle right there touches the road, and so that's why you got the letter, because it was 200 feet, your property was within 200 feet of that little panhandle. Okay? So that's why you received the letter. The parking lot's 800 feet away from your house. Actually, it's from your property, your house is even further away from the parking lot. This view, this view this way isn't going to change. We're up in here, and I think there's even a, you know, a hump in the property that you're, I don't know, but you probably won't even see that parking lot. But this view, looking out this way, is not going to change with this application. Right. That's, I just wanted you to understand where your property, and that's why you got the letter. We just drew a circle, a 200-foot circle from that outline, and you ended up in that. You touched that line, and that's why you got the letter. So you're not 200 feet from the parking lot or the building, you're well in excess of 800 feet, your property line is, and then, okay.
Thank you. And commissioners, any questions?
I just had a question of the company. Are they the company reps in the back?
Yes, the Strobes, yes.
Yeah, they could come to the podium, that'd be awesome. Just a question I have, if you're asking for 30, if you want to...
Spencer Strobe, American Scaffolding. We're located 7161 Eagle Creek Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45247.
Okay, and the other gentleman?
Barry Strobe, same address, American Scaffolding.
So you're asking for 33 parking spaces?
Yep.
And can you give us the business reason why, or do you have scaffolding where the parking spaces used to be, or what's the...
Well, basically, we need more room.
Yeah.
We've kind of outgrown our area. We bought the property across the street, we own industrial wire rope, we own the Lang Building there. So we're trying to increase our area. So we're trying to increase our area.
And in the last, in the last five years as well, to kind of cut him off, we've gone from, I think it was twenty-five field employees to sixty-five now. So we've increased our field capacity as well as our warehouse capacity from around five guys to fifteen. So we've grown the business a little bit and we're just kind of running out of space. If you kind of see our satellite view, we're kind of parked at the very far top left of our current property. You can kind of see some of the cars there and then we kind of got a cutout where some of the trees are in the very center of our property where a handful of guys park. And we're just kind of all over the map. It is, yeah, there you go. So there's like a mixture of parking there in the center as well as up at the very top. It congests our warehouse, kind of slows us up operationally, and we're just looking to get our guys across the street. Plus, for us, at the end of the day, kind of like Scott mentioned, with the congested nature of Harrison, I'm not sure if you go down there very frequently.
I don't.
It's a, it's kind of a nightmare at the end of the day for us. And I think it'll help out a lot with the little goody too, with them being able to utilize the spaces as well in the evening.
Okay. Thanks.
Basically, we want to stay in Colrain Township. We don't want to pack our bags up and move.
Sure. Thank you.
So the landscaping question too, is we do have intentions to do something. We don't have any plans, but we definitely don't want to make it. It'll look a little nicer than it does now.
I mean, the plot we're using, you know, and it's fourteen acres. I mean, like I said, we plan on doing nothing, you know, with the hillside, maybe clean it up, some area and stuff like that, but, you know, not building anything or, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your input.
Any additional questions?
I have a question. Did Little Goody Shop bring any samples?
Everywhere I go, everybody asks.
Okay. At this time, we need to close our public hearing. Can we have a motion?
So moved. Second. Second.
Mr. Peters?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMullin?
Yes.
So commissioners, we need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case CZC eleven dash one.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Peters, we have a motion in a second for approval.
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMullin?
I actually need to abstain.
Okay.
Thank you. So the motion carries. All right. So if anyone doesn't want to remain for the next three minutes before our meeting is over, you're free to leave. Next on the agenda is informal concept review. We have none.